Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Thanks for our teachers here tonight. Recognize them. When you're ready, Mr. Taverson will do a recognition and thank.
Just a couple of things that to Coach Bussey and Coach Faber on the girls' basketball team with their hard work dedication for the season, getting it underway, and then for Coach Schaefer, Coach Wilson, uh, boys' basketball team, same thing. And then our, just so you guys are aware, that our congratulations to our volleyball team and our boys' cross-country team. They were recipients of the thirty-eighth annual Team Scholar Award for the fall of two thousand and twenty-one.
Agenda items, is there anything to wrap or?
Yep, uh, COVID nineteen update, just that continuity of service plan, I forgot to put that on there, but that's what, something we look at every month, so.
You want that old?
Under old business, yep, yep.
Derek has just texted me, he's just leaving Valley's meeting, so we'll put him in whenever he kind of shows up there. So, any others other than that one?
Nope, that's it for me, yep.
We need a motion then to approve the amended.
I'll make a question.
Oh, sorry. Or by Brett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold. Consent agenda, if there's any questions on the minutes, bills, or financial reports?
The roofing project, is there another payment to go to that, or was that?
There, so there was an initial payment, and then there's, um, two, well, two more payments, but it's really two halves. They're all in the report. Part of it came out of the general fund because that's where the claim money was deposited. So I took that amount out of the general fund and the balance came from the building fund.
Okay.
Do you know what those goals were though? There were seventy-five hundred that I seen, so there was more than that.
Ninety-seven hundred was the total.
You know what, take your input.
Yes, I do, give me one second.
I saw a couple of things in different slots.
So, the insurance paid two thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. And so that's check number two zero six eight two on the bills list. That's that amount, and then on the general fund. And then the building fund, there was a four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollar amount, um, check number one seven seven four. And then two thousand seven hundred and twenty, seventy-one, check number one seven seven seven. Okay.
Is there more than that?
Those are, that's it, that's the full payment.
They're all in this bill list?
Yep. Yeah, I think so.
So that insurance was sent to the contractor that did the work then, or?
So, we received the payment back in July, and Bud couldn't find anyone to do it. And now he finally found someone to do it. So I paid the same amount that was deposited into the general fund, the two thousand one hundred and whatever it was. Um, so I, I wrote that check out of the general fund, like, it's not gonna be, so it was deposited.
The process of about seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yep, so it was deposited into the general fund miscellaneous account, and I took it out of a miscellaneous account under the board chart of accounts, so.
Well, no more questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve the consent agenda, is there a section, is that complete? That'll be a roll call.
Rob?
Yes.
Chad?
Yep.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brett?
Yep.
Meeting reports, President's report, I guess, I've got this in the package, it's for resignation sent to me to what may concern. I'm writing to inform you of my decision to resign as a bus driver for the VCN school district. I've been discussing my intent to retire with VCN Transportation Director Bud Croft since September and confirm my intent to retire by Thanksgiving with him in October. Been driving bus for twenty-eight years and two years for the Army Public School System and combined twenty-six years between Wimbling Corp and Barnes County Art. As I've aged, turning seventy-six in September, I find it harder to deal with the stress of driving school bus. In referring with my family, I've chosen to fully retire from the Barnes County School District after effective November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. From Ron Sager. I guess we should just recognize him a little bit for the years of service in our minutes somehow there. You want this back, Lindsay?
Yep.
Nothing out there, Career and Tech, we meet tomorrow, because we moved our meeting back and Derek is on the road down now here, so we'll leave that. Anything for Career and Tech to, yeah, maybe it's here, so. Mrs. Pitts, Technology Report.
Um, I don't have a whole lot. The elementary, preschool through sixth grade is going to be participating in an hour of code next Tuesday. So we'll bring two groups in, the preschool through second grade in the afternoon for an hour, and then, um, grades three through six in the morning for an hour, and they're gonna be doing different coding activities. It's just introducing them to computer science and programming and using problem solving and collaboration and thinking skills. Doing different things like the Ozabads and line the drones and the Lego videos, get a lot of stuff pretty different. Family Engineering Knights, um, coding websites. So, uh, they're gonna get little code tattoos that they're gonna get to wear and go in there and it's a really good thing the last week of of, uh, school, before the crazy Christmas vacation. So that's it, um, just a reminder, I did give Rob a laptop today, and he requested one as well. So if you wanna, send in your iPad and have a laptop instead, let me know, so I can get one set up for you. It won't be tonight, I'll set these up tonight, because he gave me a heads-up quote an hour ago, so. Wiping in his follow-on, so if you decide that, just drop me.
I can't run this one either, so.
So, why don't you just tell Rob?
Any questions, Bill Wilson? Uh, thank you. Mrs. Bussey, leave anything?
Nope, she didn't, she's been gone for the last three days. She was in this morning, but, uh, she had really nothing to report.
See, Governor, seven twelve.
Um, just a few things. The proposed trip to Washington DC is a go. We had thirty-nine registrations, uh, which is really awesome for a school our size. They were surprised at how many registered for that trip. So again, that'll be June seventeenth through the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, VCN blood drive took place November twenty-third. There were quite a few individuals that gave blood, so thank you to those that gave, volunteered, and Student Council and Mr. Samuelson for, uh, putting that together. The sophomores went to the HTTC Fair in Fargo on December second, and that went really well. And then we have finals week next week.
What creates this go to Washington?
For this one, we are opening up to the current seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. Yep. And then going forward, it'll be seventh and eighth grade, two years from now.
Any questions, Mr. Wilson? Not Mr. Taverson, superintendent.
Uh, nothing really, um, just, we're, we got, next week, we're done with classes, and then we come back in January. Um, I'll just go right into the AD report, where we are, uh, we rescheduled three girls' basketball games that were scheduled for tomorrow, Saturday, and Monday due to illness. Uh, those are all rescheduled, I sent the dates out, we rescheduled all three. So, we moving forward on that, and that's about it for that.
Yeah, I have a question for you on that. This would be like in regards to the girls' basketball team.
Yep.
Current coach has talked about not wanting to coach for next year.
Yep.
So what does that process look like to get started for that program? I mean, what's the typical, how does that get handled to get somebody?
Well, once she, once she formally resigns, then we would, we would re, we'd open it. We've had a couple of discussions with, with some staff members regarding taking that position, so. We have, you know, like I said, she's given informal, but she hasn't total, hasn't given a, a formal. But we are working internally to see if there's anybody that would be available.
Cause we, well, that program needs a lot of help with where it's at right now. Seems like it's really struggling to get some consistency in this, and it's more than sports, but that, that's a big part of the community and getting people to the school. And it seems like there's not a lot of youth involvement, like, we're not getting things started at the young level or continuing to do that. I, I don't know, is there, do you have any suggestions for what we can do to try to promote more of that, or to involve the, the youth? Are the, the parent volunteers that are out there that wanna help do this stuff, how we can make it more accessible to them?
Uh, you and I talked about that, um, I know Jody is pretty active, and Jody Schlenker is very active in that. Um, Jessie was real, but it was all on the boys' side, there was nothing really on the girl's side that if, that anybody's have done anything in that lower level. I know last year, Mrs. Bussey did do a, was it an elementary camp? Mr. Wilson, remember, was it, did she have Kate?
I think they had.
Was it K six or?
Combination of volleyball and basketball.
And they did kind of this camp, but that, that, you know, that was just a little camp, it wasn't anything to.
I mean, with the kids, if it's boys or girls, I mean, it doesn't really matter. I mean, at, at that youth age, they can all be together.
Yep.
Just learning the basics and getting time with, time on the court and time doing it.
I think Jody's actually been having open gyms for the girls and stuff.
Open gyms for everybody, yeah, for case, I think it's case, or not, I don't know how little, though she goes, but she opens it up on Sun, Sundays.
It's not K six, it's three.
Three, okay.
Six, because she asked for help from a second-grade mom who has been going to help out and as long as she can bring her second grader, so. I think it's three, three sixes. Or it's three eight or whatever it is. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what, what she, she's, I know she's asked to just have access for her open gym, but she's never said. And being it's an open gym, it's really open to anybody that you want, I mean, they can show up, it's.
What do, what do we have in the lower fifth, sixth?
Just fifth and sixth grade, I mean, for just numbers?
Yes, what, what do you got in there?
Uh, there's a lot of girls in the sixth grade, fifth grade, I'm not sure what we got, cause it'd be their first year, so I'm not sure. But we had a lot of sixth-grade girls out for volleyball, that'll continue, that'll go out for basketball as well.
And their season runs from when do it?
Uh, March, their first game is March fifteenth, so they'll probably start like the first, in the middle of March, so my, suppose first weekend of March or. And that, yeah, then they'd go from March to the end, middle of April.
Do they, and you've got some, at least?
They have six, they have six games, there's only six teams, that's the same with the boys, there's only three teams, so we play home and home with them.
If you can't get the parents involved, it's hard to get somebody to coach involved. Well, I mean, I took my kid from fourth grade all the way through, I got him to school where because of sports and all that stuff, to get my kids through school. If you're not gonna need other parents, they don't care about it, it's tough to get a coach, a staff person that's doing their kids or anything to be passionate about it.
I, it seems like there's people in the community though that are passionate about it, there's just no, there's no, nothing organized for them to kind of come in and do it, you know? Even just having them come to our meetings and talk, or just have that discussion. I mean, we do the Bison Buddy whenever that started up, but getting the kids, getting these fifth and sixth-grade boys to come to the varsity game and let them shooter, do, have, do something at halftime, I mean, there was, there was enough kids for a fifth-grade team and enough kids for a sixth-grade team. If we could keep that number of kids involved till they were seniors, I mean, the program would have great numbers. But it seems like we just lose them, and I don't know, I'm, I'm not the one to do it, but I know there's people out there. I know, like you said, Jody is really active in, in lining that stuff up, and can we do something to give them a little bit more of a platform to have those ideas, or bring those ideas to the board, or just encourage them to, to promote, you know, to do more, get these kids involved, I guess.
Yeah, Jody's a good pusher on that, and, but there's commitment to the parents, because I remember back when Jody was in third grade, fourth grade, whatever it was, and we went to all these three-on-three tournaments and stuff, and it's like, we have to keep going every weekend. And it paid off. But there was a lot of parents at the time that, oh, I'm not taking my kids all over, I'm not doing that, so she could only do so much too, but.
But I mean, like, the camp like Mrs. Bussey did is keeping that stuff scheduled, because those are important, I mean, keeping the kids active with it, keeping them out of it.
That's the key to any program that you're gonna have, no matter the sport, is that it starts at the top with the head coach, okay? Of the varsity program, all of the things that lead into it are the feeders. So, that coach has gotta have a hands-on on the elementary, the junior high, all of the stuff, in the offseason, the summertime, all of that. And it's very time-consuming, but you have to understand that when you go into that, that it is going to be that. And take on that responsibility. Now, the unfortunate thing with the girls' program is the instability of it, and then the inexperience that's followed with it. The prior two coaches coming in didn't have any experience, didn't know a right way or a wrong way to run a program. So they were learning on the fly, and this is what we have to show for it. But at the same time, there needs to be a player commitment to committing time outside of the season, in the summertime, preseason, after the season ends, to trying to get better, not just during the season is the only time that I do this. And then expect positive results as a result of not spending any time and commitment to it as well. So, there's a lot of things, but it starts at the top of being able to involve those elementary kids. You know, we do the Bison Buddy, but there's a lot of things that you can do, is having your older kids go into the elementary, junior high practices, be involved with those kids in those practices to just keep that familiarity going. So, I mean, it's a time commitment, no matter what, who, who goes in there. You know, you guys are talking a lot of parents, 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 and you, you know, it, it's nice for the travel team, but that's about as far with parents that you want getting involved with it, because then they think they have a right to dictate how the high school programs or the junior high programs are going. And then the players are hearing multiple voices in their ears telling them this and that, so, but it's, you really gotta have a strong person at the top of it that understands what the program is.
Well, how, how are we gonna get anyone to wanna come in and take this program over without showing that we're making a real put and focus to make it better as a school? No one's gonna wanna step in and take this over the way it sits right now.
Well, one, a few years will we raise the, the money for a head coach? Raise it substantially, substantially in salary for it. To try and get somebody to stay in there.
I don't know how much.
I mean, that's one start, you mean, you gotta pay somebody to do it, they're not gonna do it for free, and.
I thought about that, but could you even pay them enough, like, they're gonna wanna be a, they're gonna wanna go to a program that they see the school wants to make it better. And if they see the program been really failing, and they're doing nothing but paying more for a coach, that's not really doing anything to make the program better.
That's part of like what Mr. Wilson's saying though, is you get that head coach, they build the program, we support them, but it's their vision on how they wanna, how to, how to build that up. Granted, I understand having the, the, the parents get involved with it and work with the head coach, but it's really gotta be that head coach has to buy into the whole program themselves.
That's gonna be key to the whole thing, for sure, but just with the youth, you know, the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, like, if, I know there's parents, my kids are in that grade, grade range, my boy's in fifth grade, there's parents that are helping organize this. We've been gone, he's been in wrestling, so we have him a part of basketball, but they're out there, they're willing to come and help with open gym, and I mean, can we just give them a voice, can we have them be here, can we ask them to, to write a report on how things are going? I mean, restart a committee for the youth sports so they can tell us what's going on, or put all of them in one room to talk and say, hey, this is what we should do, like you said, let's get the older kids in their practice, that's whatever, whatever it is you need to do, I'm, I don't know, but I know if they all talk, they'll come up with things schools are doing, that good programs are doing that we're not doing. My, my, what I relate it to is like the Valley City Wrestling Program that we're co-opt with, the youth program, they invited all those youth kids to come out with the varsity, shake hands with the varsity, sit on the varsity mat, and those kids want nothing more than to be a highliner wrestler. I mean, it was super cool. I haven't seen anything here where the kids are just dying to be part of the VCN team, you know, and how do, how do we get that? How, who do we need to put in a group to talk to come up with a plan to do that?
And Eric, I will say that, just being involved in Valley City Athletics, the wrestling has been strong and very unique, cause our, our basketball program in Valley City is in the same, both girls and boys. It's, it has been for years.
You need a committed coach.
You do, and that's where the wrestlers have got it, and they've got support from the younger groups like, like Jody and them, but they need just more than that.
No, like Mr. Wilson said, it takes commitment from the kids too.
Yep.
Now, I talked to one of the girls' basketball players last weekend, and I said, so what do you need to do to be better? We need to run and condition more. Well, if your practice ends at five o'clock for some reason, you can still run. So I, I know the boys came here all the time, way more than you would have thought they should. They were running in the mornings before football practice, in the afternoon, I mean, they come to school and early and play and go to school and go to football practice, so you gotta make that dedication to yourself too.
And it's easier to do that when you've fallen in love with the game.
Right.
And you enjoy playing the game, and, and that starts early. And that's why it's important from the top to involve, to get those players, because when you have, even if you have a decent team, those younger kids are still looking at those older kids in awe, and going, oh, I, I wish I could be like that, I, I hope to be like that. But if you're not involving them, or when they're in their seasons, they're not having fun doing it, what's the incentive to come back and do it following? So, that's why it has to come from the top to go, I want a place for that coach when I get older. I wanna do those things when I get older with that, so.
What outside?
And unfortunately, that's not who we're getting on the girl's side. A lot of them play because they're able to, because we don't have the numbers. To have the competitiveness where you're gonna have to put in time to make a team, and I'm gonna come out and I'll be on the team. So, it's developing early on the love and enjoyment and experience of the game.
But like what Eric says, you know, you can get them started at elementary, and that's probably where a parent can do that and keep them involved in it, and then have the head coaches talking to them, whatever, and then they kind of take over after seventh grade.
So who, who does run these open gyms? Is it like Jody just schedules all that on her own?
You know, like, like, before basketball season, I think Schaefer was having open gyms, I don't know if Bussey was having them too, or what the.
But I'm sure she's scheduling that, cause she does a travel team, doesn't she?
Jody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm sure a ma, a majority of that is to get those kids court dining.
I think she's opening it up for everybody now.
Yeah, and open it up to everybody, but making sure
Right.
that those kids are.
So is that all their responsibility, like, if she can't come, she finds someone else to be there? I mean, is there like a name to it, like, how many people have keys open up to school?
It's her team that she's coaching.
But it's, it's opened anyone right now?
Yeah, it is, it's opened everyone.
Whoever wants to come, come.
Cause she's trying to work with younger ones too right now.
And I mean, if we got that group of people, whoever they are, like her, and if she's not there, whoever else steps in her place, can we give them a voice to talk to us? Like, to come up with ideas and give it to the board, or bring their concerns, or whatever they have, so they can have a direct line? So at least when we are looking for this varsity coach, we can show that we're, we're trying to change the, the whole program a little bit. We're trying to start from the bottom up, we're trying to encourage this the whole way through.
We're trying to raise our voice. But you're right, though, I think that's where it should, should start.
Should come to that, but we got a committee, I mean, that's, I think, where it should really go to, extra principal committees.
What can we play around the committee?
Yes, I can appoint whoever you would like on that committee, yes.
We have an restricted.
Yeah, we could appoint an extra, another person.
Oh, yeah.
As they have to point somebody on.
It doesn't have to be somebody out on the board, we can.
We have to approve that.
Right.
Approve, yes. We can't just put on, and the board would have to vote that person, she's okay.
Well, I'd make a motion.
It'll be kind of in this policy you're gonna look at.
Can you just put them on there without asking them if they wanna be on there?
No.
Any motion for that?
I would have to talk to them, then there would be, yes, then there would be a motion to.
But you didn't wanna talk to them first, of course, and you'll talk to them?
I can talk, yes.
If they agree to be part of it, then we vote them in.
Yeah, cause then we could, there's a policy for committees, but yes. Then we would roll through, and then there would be the board.
I think that'd be good for the program, I think that'd be good step to show, as we are looking for that coach, I mean, I, like you said, we gave them more money, but I don't know if that's really the, I mean, if you're not showing you want it to be better, why would anyone wanna come?
Well, it's, well, it has to do with the right person and the right place at the right time.
And that's the toughest thing, I mean, to get that person in that head spot where, like you said, you gotta have that, that there to drive it. If you don't have the person there to drive it, it just doesn't work.
And ninety percent of the time, we get one applicant, so there is, we don't get to choose, you have to take who, that's the problem. I mean, if we had five, six people applying, what you're saying is a hundred percent what we should be doing.
Well, that's why we're bringing it up now, we're so far off that if we do anything now to build this applicant pool, because you get someone who's never coached before that says, alright, I'll try it.
What we're doing right now is we're working the best, so what can we do to see if we can change that?
But I, I do think you have to kind of be careful though, I mean, you can start the process, because as word of this starts to spread, that's gonna be indecisive, and the girls that are currently playing are gonna be in flux and going, oh, what's going, what's happening?
We, we have that a little right now, when our coach says we're not coming back next year.
Yeah.
That, I don't really, should have happened until it was the time to be, if you don't publicize that upfront.
You're either on or off the bus.
You're either on or off, you're asking the kids to commit, but then you got one saying, oh, I'm not coming back next year, you know? So that doesn't help at all.
So there, and lies a whole nother issue.
That's a whole nother issue.
That needs to be addressed, and.
To me, that doesn't help at all.
To me, that would be, then that would fall on Mr. Taverson as athletic director, correct? Anyone, anyone have an opinion?
We're absolutely.
Okay. So, that needs, okay.
Okay, I'll talk about that, see what we, what we can do with anything, or see where we have the policy committee.
We just need to set a date, we, we went over some policies, I sent them, um, that we're gonna discuss, we've got three or four that we had questions on that and we got from the School Board Association, we're gonna do those next month. There are two coming up here, um, that we, that we just need to review, and, and, uh, they were amended, and then, uh, so we just need to set a date for the next meeting.
So we'll do that after.
Okay.
So do we wanna?
You just gonna fit in where you're? No worries. You gonna fit in right where you're gonna go?
Oh, okay.
Budget, finance, nothing else coming up?
Nothing, no, nothing at this point.
Michelle, Family Connection?
Uh, we served, the Family Connection served on Monday, the concessions, and I do not remember what we made, the list. Do you remember?
Two seventy-something?
Two, yeah, two seventy-something, so, uh, we're gonna be meeting beginning of January to determine where those funds go. We are most likely gonna be donating it to the artists and residents that have been coming, because they were short funds, so. That's all I have for that.
Any questions on, you served that up again?
Yep, we served Monday night concessions here.
Other old business?
And we just, just that we need building grounds before we go tonight, we need to set a date too. Bud, Bud, just, uh. Bud, Bud just, yeah, Bud just asked that we, um, we're talking about some things that he, so we need to get a building grounds meeting set up. Yep.
Esser, update Esser funds?
Not really, um, we, we, I did our, um, report for the legislature. Now we've got a one that's gotta go for the feds. Uh, it's due January eleventh and there's quite a process to it, so we just, it was on, really confusing because they wanna know how much percentage of the funds you've spent and, and what the dollar amounts and everything like that, so, um, trying to keep Lindsay, you know, with something to do, so we keep giving her more with the Esser stuff. And she likes that, so she's, it's one of her, one of her favorite things to do in the world, so we're keeping her busy with it. But that, we have to do a report and it talks about learning loss and all that stuff. And so, um, Lindsay will do the budget side and then I'll work with the principals to get, to get the other information into that. That's gotta be in January eleventh.
One comment I have is Esser one, we have over thirty thousand dollars left in there and it needs to be spent by nine thirty of twenty twenty-two. And that was the first group of funding and we didn't have to allocate it to anything, so it's just kinda sitting there. Um, I know we just got an email for a payment that is being withheld from our state aid that we might try to recoup some of that somehow. Don't really know how yet, but supposedly, um, another thing that you and I, or I had asked you about, I guess, was maybe Melissa had mentioned copiers.
Yep.
If we could fit that in somehow.
And you just answer one? Okay. All right, any questions there? Uh, Mr. Ball?
I didn't do any reports from the communication, I'll do want to give anything else, but don't we meet tomorrow?
You don't want to spill the bean on the meeting tomorrow?
What did Valley City do? Did they, did they?
They, they did approve signing of this letter of commitment, um, and then I pushed them to give me some guidance as far as one-to-one matching funds for, I guess, what I call Plan B of the grant application, which would be a renovation in addition to the current center. I guess I'll start with this letter of commitment. Uh, I know we had asked you to consider a, a letter of commitment last month. I guess I apologize if I led this board to believe that Valley City's board was gonna make a determination one way or another on November fifteenth. I guess that's what I was led to believe by them, uh, that they were gonna look at their survey results and make some sort of decision. Unfortunately, their survey results, at least in their opinion, was too close to make that determination. They wanted to look into it further. Um, that kinda put us into, oh, now what, as far as the letter of commitment was concerned? So the Career Tech Center board met, discussed this letter of commitment and, uh, the direction I was given was to try and soften it a little bit. Uh, that it was as minimal of a letter of commitment as it could be and still be considered a letter of commitment. Uh, I removed the portion that said, you know, we, we plan to remember, remain members of the Career Tech Center for the foreseeable future. And it shortened it just to, you know, a general letter of equip, uh, commitment and that we would commit to working together to do what was in the best interest of the, of the center, basically. Litchfield Marion signed it last week on the eighth, Mangle Valley signed it that same evening, and that was just at Valley City's board where, um, their superintendent was missing this evening, so I'll have to catch that, but their board did approve it. I would ask the current kind of board to consider doing the same. Basically, it gives us, or gives me the permission to go ahead and write the grant for both options. And either the state can decide, or if the state is fine with both going forward, then it would be Valley City boarders that would decide whether or not they're willing to support a Plan A, which would be a new Career Tech Center at a yet-to-be-determined location, if that would fail. And the state would grant approval for the Plan B, then it would revert to doing a, um, renovation in addition to the current center. What I asked Valley City's board tonight was to give me some direction as far as where those one-to-one matching funds for that Plan B could come from. A couple of ideas that I think would, would work, uh, if they would be willing to donate the land and the building, uh, that we currently rent from them for the Career Tech Center. I did get word from the state director as well as O and B, their, uh, operations and what is the standard of the budget?
Management.
Uh, that they would consider that donation as an in-kind donation. The building's currently insured for four point three million, so we could use that as an in-kind donation towards hopefully, you know, four point three up to four point three back from the state to use toward renovation, renovation in addition. Uh, that option would require us to expand our grant from right now, just a renovation in addition, to acquisition of the land, building and renovation in addition. That way, the four point three valuation of the current building and land could count as in-kind. And then the state would give us hopefully up to the four point three to do the actual renovation in addition. So no additional cost to the rest of our member schools for that. The Valley City would have to be willing to donate that land and build. Whether or not that makes sense for them to do is, is something that they'll have to decide, um, at some point. The other option would be that they retain ownership of the building. We continue to pay rent to them for the building. Would potentially increase a little bit what we pay for rent because we paid by square foot. But then they would need to come up with a way to cover the one-to-one matching funds. If it's a four million dollar renovation in addition, that would be a two million that they would need to be able to raise for that. The only way I see to do that would be to ask for that in a bond referendum. So their bond referendum would, would go out and say, you know, are you in favor of an X mil, X many million dollar referendum for a new building? New high school, whatever they decide, would go on that. If not, would you be in favor of supporting, you know, two million dollars needed for the one matching funds for, for renovation in addition to the center? They may elect to combine that with renovations in additions to Washington Jefferson or Junior Senior High. I don't know if that jeopardizes necessarily what we're able to do at the Career Tech Center, but ultimately, it's our bond referendum at that point. There's very little say the rest of us would have, I guess, if they're gonna retain.
If they retain the ownership, it's gotta go in the referendum.
So those are the kind of two options. They didn't wanna make a determination tonight, they wanted to go over that. But they did give me permission to put both of those in the grant application, so then I can get that typed in and our board can hopefully.
They would let that go in?
They would let both of those options go in, yet to be determined, Litchfield. So either they would donate the land and building to count as in-kind match for a eight million dollar project or put on their bond referendum, a two million dollar ask of their patrons to cover the one-to-one for a four million. Please ask questions, I know it's.
Will that have any, uh, because you're putting two proposals into the one grant, will that have any hindrance on getting funds? With it not being sure exactly what's being asked for?
I would have to say yes. If I'm being honest.
Yeah.
But so would only having a portion of our member schools approve this letter, this letter. So.
And you did talk to them upfront that we didn't wanna put in conflicting paths, right?
Correct, yeah. We don't wanna put one in for it. Supported by two of our four member schools for a new construction and another one for a renovation in addition, supported by two members. You need to have three letters of commitment. So really, realistically, we couldn't do that.
And I know at the last meeting, cause I wasn't there, there was some concern with having the option where it was being built in a part of, you know, the school building and wondering how that would impact our kids or whatnot. And Mr. Severson and I talked about it, and I just went over and I asked the kids, when they were sitting there eating, how many of you would be bothered by the fact that you would have to walk into Valley City High School rather than the Tech Center, and none of them cared. It was, it wouldn't, oh, I wouldn't have done it then, no. They were just like, you gotta walk into a building, what's the difference whether it's a Valley City High School or the Tech Center in Valley City? Either way, they're having to transport, so I just wanna put that out there to kinda alleviate any of the hesitancy if it's one building.
And we talked about that at the meeting, cause it's, it's easier for us than Litchfield because we're already sending kids to Valley for everything.
Yeah, and we're cooperative.
And we're cooperative.
That helps a lot, I think.
So it helped our side a lot more than, say, Litchfield Marion at the time. The process, once it goes in, and we take one or the other, then it still comes back to our board.
Yep, so if the state.
Or just go through the process and what would happen.
Yeah, so if the state approves one plan or the other or both, um, then it would come back to the Career Tech Center board, um, whether or not to accept the grant and which of those options as far as in-kind donation would be pursued.
And that would be determined by the Valley City School Board, I'm not sure they wanna do.
The Career Tech Center. Career Tech Center.
But they don't get to decide whether or not the Valley City School wants to donate the land?
No, no, it's, if, if we would accept the grant, what, what we're awarded, that has to go through.
So Valley City's board would need to consider whether or not they're willing to donate the land if it comes to Plan B.
So what you're asking is a motion to, for us to sign this letter of commit?
Yep.
Commitment, same, same what?
What this letter says.
That we commit to the Career Tech Center, the Valley, right?
That we're gonna basically send in a grant application.
Yeah, basically, supporting me, the Career Tech Center is, it actually is applying for the.
I'd like to make that motion.
I will second that.
Any other discussion or questions from Derek?
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes. Okay, we will get that signed.
I suppose.
Any other questions vocational wise?
Since you're president of our board, president of that board, you represent both, obviously you said yes, you felt it was a.
I'd like, I'd like to.
I feel it's a great idea. I wish I should have asked you before.
The plan we have to expand is needed. We've known, we've worked out on here, thinking what we need there. And the only way we can do it is to send it, send it in. We gotta at least throw it a tap in the ring. I guess that's what we gotta do.
That'd be my preference, at least take a stand. All else, you know, if it comes down to we aren't able to do anything for one reason or another, at least nobody can say we didn't try.
Well, ideally, if you got the grant and they donated the land, then you would actually be setting Shan Valley Career Tech Center would actually be its own entity rather than just a subsidiary of Valley City School or anything like this.
Correct. I, I.
That'd be more beneficial, I feel, and.
If we'd have to go on our own, we would have to, if they wouldn't donate the land, we're gonna do it, we'd have to buy some loan to cover some.
I looked into, yeah, op, you know, the option of doing like a twenty-year loan to buy down the two million needed for, uh, renovation in addition. I guess I felt like that was gonna be too much of an ask for our member schools.
Well, the renovation in addition would still be their property.
If they didn't give up the billion.
If they gave up the billion.
Let's say they donated the land and building.
Then it would be the center.
And then he said, but, you know, we want the rest of the member schools to come up with the two million and not expand it to an eight million dollar grant. Still only apply for a four million dollar grant, not include the acquisition of the building and land. They'll still count it as an in-kind donation, but that doesn't give you the liquid cash to actually pull off the four million dollar project. So if the rest of our member schools, cause Valley City Public's not gonna donate a four point three million dollar building and then still.
And then kick it in, right.
So if the other three member schools had to pay down that two million over twenty years, it comes out to like thirty to thirty-two million, or thirty-two thousand, excuse me, for B C N annually, on top of what they currently pay for membership. I didn't feel like that was something that was realistic.
With the building being four point three million, the state's only gonna be kicking in half the total project cost of this four million dollar project, the state's only gonna give in two million.
Correct. So that's why I have to expand the grant to an eight.
It's a straight one-to-one dollar grant.
And I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know what they'll say about the acquisition of the building and land. Because they're not dumb. I mean, they know that our goal is the renovation in addition. The state doesn't necessarily like that Career Tech Centers own their own land and building. I don't know why that is necessarily. But they would prefer that, you know, the rent payment, I guess, potentially because you need three member schools. If you ever drop to below three, and then the two schools remaining own this building, it gets kinda messy up, you know, who gets to use it? Who's buying out who, or if it's rented, it just goes back to whoever owns it. But that said, we think we're adding schools in the future.
We gotta come up with a decision tomorrow and give an app for anybody in the morning. What are you saying? We have some work to do.
At least you won't be in school for a week or something.
Starts tomorrow at our meeting and then we gotta, two weeks to get it.
I said you can come over, just as break and help.
So, any other questions of Career Tech?
Thanks for the drive, Karen.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't too bad yet. Okay, board retreat was put on, I sent out before, to see if anybody's interested in doing one and when, and didn't get a lot of response back, so we stuck it on to see what everybody thought then. I got response from Cindy, comments from Cindy and Michelle, got a couple thumbs up. So we stuck it on to our discussion there.
Honestly, I thought in the comments it was a goal, you were just looking for dates.
Yeah, we, we assumed it was a goal. We were just gonna put a date on it.
I assumed it was a goal. I thought you were just looking for dates. Honestly, and I was like, I'm fine with any date.
Yeah, let us know when and we'll see if that works.
Yeah, honestly, that's what I thought.
And if we do, then somebody can get back what, throw back some topics that we wanna work on to get on there. Write them up for you. Yep.
Or athletics.
Yep.
Athletics. Okay, so in talking to Lacey at J and L's, um, I did confirm that we can do a Wednesday because then we don't interfere with sporting events and things. The best date for her is the last Wednesday in January the twenty-sixth. Cause I told her the nineteenth wouldn't work and that doesn't work for her either. And I did think we'd wanna do January fifth, but it's all, if you guys wanna look at calendars, but she's available the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. So. Thoughts?
I, I'm out of, uh, I got training out of state on the last month of Jan, or last week of January, so if it works for you guys, I just won't be there, but that's.
And we do understand we probably can't get everybody, like we get that.
I prefer the twelfth.
Twelve an option, or is that what you said?
Uh, the nineteenth does not work.
Twelfth and twenty-sixth would be.
Twenty-sixth are open.
I'll swear on the ground, hung his day.
The nineteenth.
Well, we think the nineteenth, the calendars at the end, I mean, that's the proposed date.
Yeah.
It normally would be.
Yeah.
You ready?
Any guys with thoughts?
I, the twelfth wouldn't work great for me.
Won't be back from the Bahamas yet.
No, I'm, I'm back soon for that day.
Oh.
They'll look down.
What was the other choice?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, go with that. That's, I mean, that, I'm sure I can find a million other things to do, but if you set it for that day, then I'll try.
Okay, and we're thinking, um, like a three-hour window, right? Not kinda what we had talked about, like a five to eight-ish or six to nine or whatever, I mean, you know.
Ish.
They will serve food in the back and we'll be in that back little apartment area. She'll have a big table set up.
So would you say five to nine, maybe somewhere in between?
Good enough.
Give you three hours.
Five to eight, give you three hours.
Well, five to.
Oh, for the eating time, okay.
I'm like, I need eat and drink.
All right, so I will tell her, okay, so what date are we on?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
And choose some agenda items that you wanna talk about.
Where is that in the San Boron area?
J and L's is in San Boron, yes.
Okay.
Six to nine?
Five to nine.
We're just gonna start at five. Get a free lunch out of it.
But some of this is working.
We'll get there when you can. I mean, we'll start by.
We'll start.
Well, you know what I'm saying, like if you can't be there.
There's a time to eat, Rob, throw up at eight-thirty and get your food and then go home.
We'll start at that hour. Get there as well.
We're back up one thought, we wanted to talk about something that.
Oh.
For current, I apologize.
That's all right.
Want to say, okay, I wanted to speak a little bit to Egghead, um, our counselor, Alicia brought up that, you know, they were looking for some elective ideas for students. And two years ago, I came to an open house up here at B C N, talked to some parents, and one of the ideas to get kids into Egghead sooner was an online intro to Egghead. We did, we did begin offering that the next year. Maple Valley has had, you know, probably half dozen students now take that intro. Mr. Fritz, because Maple Valley is twenty minutes away, has been willing to go out there during his seventh period prep and meet with the students that are, are part of that. So I couldn't promise that, you know, if, if B C N did that as well, that he would be willing to come out a little bit early, but something tells me Mr. Fritz is pretty dedicated to his craft. And doesn't have a ton of other family commitments, that he would be willing to likely do the same out here. It is an online class, so they can take it any part of the day, but if it would so happen to fall in that sixth, seventh period, you know, where they had common time, he could potentially come out and do some of the hands-on projects with them. If not, they'll still get a fair amount, I would think, out of the online opportunity. Uh, that would give them the opportunity then to participate in F F A as well. You have to be enrolled in a current, um, Egghead program, but to be in F F A, and that was what the parents were looking for. They don't wanna wait till the junior senior year to be able to start in F F A. It, it takes a couple of years to kind of.
So who's the F F A director?
Are Egghead instructor.
So they would have probably go to meetings or something there, right?
They do now have joint meetings, we try and do it over teams so that they don't have to track, drive in. But they're there on site, some of our juniors and seniors that are participating, um, are able to be there. It, it does become hard to find dates that are available because kids are in a lot of things. We want it to be as well, but.
But we do also have to look at where our school is at and our taxpayers, majority, I would say almost all of them, but the majority of them have someone in their family that works in the egg business, whether it's selling seed, or it's a farmer, or, you know, whatever, I mean, that's where our money's coming from. And we have kids that that's what they wanna do, and that's all they wanna do. So we are not providing them with a service in our school that allows them to pursue that.
Not to mention it keeps our community viable, because if you get the young kids into egg, they stick around the, the rural areas versus going wherever.
And that, that would help us to expand programs for them there.
It is a good feeder for the rest of our programs, because they can touch on a little bit of egg mech, you know, small engine, touch a little bit of welding, construction. Definitely, but then also horticulture, livestock.
There's so much.
The first thing our Egghead instructor says is, I'm not gonna teach you how to farm a ranch, that's not what Egghead is, it's a part of it, sure, but it's not.
There's so much, yeah.
There's a ton of opportunities for, you know, business sector, egg related business, egg sales, egg insurance, egg, you know.
Crop.
Insurance, there's, there's tons. Another opportunity, it's, it's not, nothing in stone, don't hold me to it yet, but Cooperstown, Griggs County Central came, their superintendent for a tour of the Career and Tech Center last week. Sounds like they're going through a little bit of a change there, might be interested in bringing students, especially if we're able to do an all-day academy path. It alleviates some of the transportation issues that they'll have coming, either just first block or just third block. They currently have a halftime egg instructor that they would like to make full-time, and I ditched the idea, what if, you know, we were able to hold the contract for that egg teacher? And they would serve both B C N and Griggs County Central onsite.
That's exciting.
If there would be a room. It opens Pandora Box a little bit, I would imagine, which will marry in the East and Maple Valley, saying, looking to offer onsite at our locations too, um, but.
But if we don't start doing these things, that, you can't have that whole day back.
We've started the conversation.
We need a.
That's where we're at.
That's.
We just wanted to say where we're kinda at.
National stages.
Yep.
I, I agree with what you said, I mean, I've, I've had people, I always say, I'm a farmer in this community, I've had farmers in this community say, farming funds this school, why don't you offer anything egg specific? I've always kinda thought that, I think this is great. How can we, what can we do now, or we're gonna talk about it next meeting, make sure we're moving forward with this idea? So, the next meeting is not just brought up and made this point, the next meeting, you know, how do we set a pathway?
Or we hit May and we haven't talked about it yet.
Yeah, how, well, can, how do we set a pathway to this to make it move forward?
I think it's more on our side what we can get for instructor, because we're gonna have to share it with someone. That's kind of our thought to start with.
Right, to try and split it between a couple, you, you could do this, but you can do it without the Career and Tech Center.
Right.
Forty percent.
Right.
Well, we don't wanna rush into doing it without forty percent, so.
That's worth the thought, wasn't it?
But especially if it helps bring them up, I mean, that saves them a halftime teacher, but yet they have the same service they have now.
Right.
So, it, it helps maybe entice them to become member schools.
How many hours would we have that teacher then?
It'd be three periods a day. In a seventh period a day, I would imagine there'd be three periods there, drive here during one period, three periods.
I mean, this, we'd be talking one out of the three then, we'd have potentially two.
No, no, no. No, I, I, I foresee this, this position only servicing Barnes County North and Griggs County.
Yeah, but it'd be here for three periods then.
Right.
Yeah.
So this, this intro to egg would be one of those three.
Could be.
But we could have two potentially other new electives to add along with the teacher.
Yeah, it could be a horticulture, uh.
Yep.
Entomology.
Right, livestock production, egg, egg business.
It would have to be in person for it to do, because our kids have had the options to take those online.
Correct.
For quite a while, you know, and then I know there's also the Nelson Egg Academy that has classes that they offer online. Our kids just aren't choosing to take those online. So this would affect it differently, not that they haven't had the opportunity to take those egg classes. They are, they're just not electing to take them online. Or if we get the person here for three periods, yeah, that could drastically change, but then that would also, but it would be tied in, that would just mean we would send fewer kids to the tech center.
For.
I see it adding a lot of intricacies on making this high school schedule and making that a lot more difficult, which I think would be a wonderful opportunity for the students, it's something we'd definitely pursue.
I think that's what I wanted to just bring up, we are working on it.
Yep.
We're at the initial stage. Is that the best way to say it?
There's a current option, but I totally understand it's not the best.
Yeah.
Online is not ideal. He, he tries to make it hybrid, but I, I understand your students not wanting to take an online class.
Some things you buy online, some things you wanna try.
Great.
Have them in person.
Any other questions for Derek?
I'll try not to think of anything else.
You gotta go home and think about it for tomorrow.
Get my typing fingers ready.
Okay, COVID update.
Um, just to, um, to let you know, we've had, um, on Monday, we had thirty-nine kids gone, yesterday, we had fifty-five, and we had thirty-nine again gone today, so. Presently, we have five out with COVID, the rest are out with just sickness. So we, we tossed around some ideas, but I think we're probably best just to continue as is and, and get through it, because it's, I don't know what, what difference it's gonna make, it's not, I mean, we, we threw around the idea of, of not, you know, going remote and whatever, but now we're right at the end of the semester and, you know, so it's, we're at the point where I think it's just, we tough it out and, like I said, we got five right now that are, that are COVID and the rest are whatever's going around.
Yeah, and we have five days left, so.
Yeah.
So let's, and then we can have two week, or not quite.
Yeah, that was kinda the thing we talked about was.
We can have to sanitize and clean everything up and, because it's going around everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, if we went out, if we went out Friday, we'd have an extra three days, but what's that, I mean, I don't think that's gonna make any difference and then,
I agree.
you know, we're just, so we're, we're, that was what we, we talked about, but we decided that it's probably best to, to stay in and, and now go forward as is. The other thing, Mike, did we wanna mention anything from budget and finance about the retention bonuses? Did you wanna say anything about that?
I guess we, we had approved them and we put them out in two, two, uh, different.
Yep.
Payments.
Yep.
And then one went out for this payroll today.
Yep.
And there are four retentions, so, and we split them, so there'd be one that if you were employed from May one till December tenth. So you're retained for that period, you got one, and then if you started December eleventh and are still employed at May nineteenth, the end of the year, there'd be the second installment. So if you, if you also add to that. That's kind of what we did, we, we, we'd approve that money.
Yep.
And then answer to fifty, right around fifty-three thousand round number. So we, I think we came with what, I think twelve dollars, Lindsay?
Something like that.
About where we were.
Perfect.
Yes, so.
Did everyone get paid the same?
Yes, that were.
The full-time employees did, yes.
Yes, that qualified for it, yes.
Perfect.
So from a staff standpoint, I need to say thank you to the board.
Thank you.
Okay. New business, we got election date.
So, we really only need to approve the election date in order to approve our calendar.
Yeah.
And they changed the number of days that the canvas happens. So it used to be six days after the election and now it's thirteen. And so there's the first, I think I gave everyone a copy, um, the first one is if we have the election on June seventh, and the second one is if we have the election on June fourteenth. We have done it both ways in the past, the first Tuesday, the second Tuesday. I don't think it affects the turnout one way or the other, no one seems to show up. So I guess it's just kind of a personal preference. I personally think that it works out better for the rest of our meetings for the month if we have it June seventh. Just because then we could hold everything on June twentieth and only have one meeting that month. But it's entirely up to you guys.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a winner.
So we need a motion to set.
Should we start and get to the meeting here?
We need a motion to first accept, select the election date.
I make a motion to select the election date as.
June seventh?
June seventh, twenty twenty-two.
I will second that.
Is that Rob?
Yep.
Roll call and then.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yep.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll move to basically the calendar.
Yep. So then for that calendar, really the, I mean, it's pretty much standard, the third Wednesday of the month, except for in March, because we have the superintendent evaluation. And then in June, you really just need to decide if you wanna do both meetings on the twentieth, or if you wanna do one the fifteenth and the twentieth. And then I did change the canvassing meeting date to six-thirty from six o'clock, because it doesn't take an hour to do that.
Thank you.
Um, and then we have the October meeting is on a Tuesday because of the convention. And then November is early because of the superintendent evaluation deadline, so.
Well, I make a motion to approve the one with June twentieth as both meetings.
Yep. Second. Roll call when you're ready.
Is that Brent, the second? Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yeah.
Eric.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
So I'll get a final copy sent out to you guys tomorrow.
Thank you.
Then the Ten Mile Lake project, we got some information for that?
Yeah, um, we got all kinds of information, I'm not sure how to. Go to send it down, there's a, there's a bunch of ballots here that need to be signed, I guess, but they're looking at assessments and they're for different lots, different blocks. This, this group is two hundred and four forty-four, seventy-five ninety-eight, two nineteen. That's that group of, of ones, and then we got a second envelope. I'm not sure what it's, Mike, can you explain it?
Brett's on the board.
Oh, there we go.
He can explain it better than I can.
Okay.
Oh, they're looking at, there was drainage area and we had a request by the landowners to take a look at making it a legal assessment drain. And the vote's coming up the end of the December thirtieth, you have to have the ballots in by, but there's a map of all the properties in the area. And these are some of our properties that fall within that watershed district. There's assessment and taxable values on there. And that would be what we would wind up paying over the next twenty years towards the improvements to that watershed drain area. Basically, the water from up in the Wimbledon area kinda drains through, meanders over by Daisy, goes into Ten Mile Lake, and what they wanna do is increase the drainage on the lake and open up the ability to tile and drain into it from this side too. So, it's about a close to shy six million dollar project, and the state water department picked up two point eight of it, so. Winds up being about a three million dollar project coming out of local funding. And so that's what these ballots pertain to.
So what we would be looking at here is, one way to vote on this is what we would be looking at here.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Basically, what's it? So as our two board members, which way you lean us towards?
Well, I could, I can comment on it. So the whole project, the local share is three and a half, three, three something, three million dollars. So everyone that owns land, the entire city of Daisy, every lot in Daisy, when Ten Mile floods, it's great, our, my house is right next to it, floods out through us, towards Daisy, and then it went south and north. So everyone that was getting flooded out, they're all a hundred percent assessed. As you work your way west, it does lower, I don't even know what percentage of school would be in. But that water, they're trying to, like you said, they're trying to make outlets this water can leave. So, right now, there's nowhere for this water to go, and the cost, the way the engineers design it, is outrageously expensive. But to get a big statewide significant drain like this put in, it has to be done like this. The whole, everyone that has water that contributes, that's in this watershed gets to vote on it. So they need half, half of that three million dollars, or just over half, of people that respond in favor of it, the project will go through. And then if you were in favor of it or not, you get assessed on, on your taxes. So only the people that respond, you know, whatever gets sent back in gets counted. So you get one vote for every dollar. So there's, there's a lot of ways to look at it, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of expense to it. It's by the acre, so if you have a one acre lot in the city of Daisy and you have one acre in a field, those one acres are being assessed the exact same, you know, if you're in a hundred percent assessment. So, the cities are all assessed and they were, I don't know how they felt about it, but, you know, their, their rate compared to the farmer's rate was really minimal, because they didn't take any value of the properties or anything, it's just on the acre of land, you're assessed by the acre. It's, it comes down to one hundred percent personal thing. I mean, it's just how you feel on what this water's actually doing. I know a lot of people are upset with the cost of the project, a lot of people don't think it's gonna give them any benefit. The one kicker to it, the state water board keeps saying that if there's no outlet put on the stream, they will not approve any water being brought into it. That's kind of the one hook they keep saying to try to get people on the west side to support it, is if you ever wanna approve your drainage in the future, you gotta be on board to support the outlet right now. But there's a lot of contention even on the side of where people are getting flooded out, done, whether or not they support it, just because of how expensive it got to be. The one thing I'd say to the price of it is this is probably over twenty years, it could be fifteen years, it could be twenty years. I think they gotta vote on that if the project goes through.
Yeah, once they get the final assessments put down.
If it, if it goes through and it's for twenty years, and twenty years from now, nothing's done, we're gonna look back and wish that this got done right now. That's my, I, right now, I feel that it's really, it's really high-priced. Personally, on my farm, I'm supporting it, I'd like to see other people support it, but I can't sit here and tell them they have to, because I realize it's really expensive, so it's, to me, it's everyone's decision.
And just for clarification, so there, it's all the property we own, the, the one with the three sheets or the property we own in Wimbledon?
I'm assuming so.
Yeah.
The other ones here in town, or here in the, this, this building, yeah.
And it, to the grand scheme of the project, I don't know, I quick added it up, came up with about twenty-five hundred dollars of what it would be, so it'd be that, over twenty years, which there would be the interest added on to that, but it's gonna be about a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Right.
But it's not much say whether or not this project goes through or not, because it's two thousand out of a three-million-dollar project, so.
Right, but ultimately, like, like we said before.
Fair.
We're surrounded by agriculture, most of the people that pay for this, for their tax, you know.
You couldn't say that most farmers don't support it, I don't think.
Right, but, I mean.
There's been, there's gonna be some.
There's gotta be something.
People mad regardless of what they do.
But there's gotta be something done to, to alleviate the water pressure that's out on the eastern side of the, of this, this area. Yes, and this year, it didn't seem bad, although it drove, but we had.
Well, you look at what the school must and stuff went through last year and trying to get around, I mean, I think the school could very easily find a way to support it, because what they've put into it versus what they'd benefit, I think, even if as an individual you were against it, you could see why the school would.
Oh, right, right.
Maybe I'm not in favor of it, if you got anything else to say about it.
It's expensive, 'cause like, my assumption is it's gonna be like eighty thousand dollars, or I'm not in favor of that, because really, there's no benefit, you know? It's ten miles from the bottom of the bowl, and, so, I don't know. And like you said, no matter what, yes or no, I know you supported me on it.
Yeah, I.
We can do either, we can vote to make a motion to vote yes on these, or vote no, or not turn it in, correct? I mean, some won't turn it in, right?
You don't have to turn it in.
You don't have to turn it in. So, you do have three options.
Yeah, we could opt to take no option, see if they're all.
I mean, that, that's, then we're three, I mean, we, we wanna make a vote, we gotta vote.
Because ultimately, if it passes, if you didn't vote for it, it's, you're still paying for it.
Correct.
If you voted against it, you're still paying for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Just, these was really in the state neutral?
Well, I'll make a motion that we support it.
Okay, there's a motion to support the Ten Mile. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Not Lindsay?
Rob? Chad?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brent?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
I'm just gonna abstain from this one.
Good choice.
Gives my names on them papers here.
You're on the water, you're on the water, but that would be the reason for abstain.
Good point.
You need a good reason that you're on the water board.
So, it passes six-two-one.
Two.
Six-two.
Six-two.
It's two and one, six-two and one abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said six-to-one.
No, six-two, one abstain.
Okay. Annual adjustments, budget-wise, we're looking at.
So, I don't know if anyone needs a copy of the budget, I sent it out, I have a few copies, I didn't print a ton, because they're long, so if you want to, like, share with partners or whatever. But, um, the changes were on page six. Um, the first grade areas under title one was strictly just changing the source code from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-one, based on guidance the DPI sent. Um, there was some confusion about what year we used, and it's the year they received the money, not the year we received the money. So, that's the difference there. Um, under title four, I moved the twenty-one, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year allocation to title five. And I changed the source code to twenty-twenty, because the, the amount left in title four is last year's funds that we didn't use.
Carryover.
Yep. And then on page seven, um, I moved title two into title five, so title four and title two are now going to be combined under title five, and we can use that all for salary purposes. So, that's the changes there.
All five can use for that.
Yep. Salaries and benefits. And then on page twelve, I changed then the revenue amounts. Um, so title two went to zero, title four remains the carryover from last year, and then title five is the combined title two and title four for this year. And it's more of a formality than, than anything, I mean.
Good job.
Encouraged.
I do need a motion to approve for.
We need the adj, the adjustment, we need a motion for the budget adjustment.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for that.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any other discussion or questions? Is clear as mud everywhere?
Well, we're talking about budget things, I haven't heard any more discussion on our accounting process, how's that coming?
So, in my office afterwards, you can take a look how it's coming.
Okay.
There's a lot of boxes in there.
Yeah, we're never gonna be done by the end of the year, so, I mean, it's, it's tough.
All right. We'll drop that and then go on with the next.
Roll call, and then you can touch base on that a little bit.
Rob?
Yes.
Chad?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brent? Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
What, uh, you, how, do you come the last, the last stuff you've got, you're, come on most of what we needed?
So, I have gotten, um, I got initial requests for stuff for the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen audits that I sent in, once he got all of the initial paperwork, he came back with payout, page full of things he needed. So, I've been digging through boxes almost every day, trying to find what I'm looking for. Um, so I sent him what I can find, um, then he came back with more stuff he needed, so I dug back through the same boxes. And as of this board meeting, I have sent him everything I have, I have followed up with the people, because I need to get stuff from people that aren't just me, and I, I'm not getting a lot of response back from, from some people at the state and some people like at our four-oh-three-B companies and things.
Lindsay, who sent him? You mean you?
Our auditor.
Oh, our new auditor.
The new auditor, yep, and he has asked for so many things that I don't believe have ever been provided in an audit before, so.
And he's not helping a lot.
Oh, he's, I mean, he's being helpful, but he can't come dig through boxes, and I wasn't here, so I don't know where things are filed until I start going through the boxes, so. But I, like I said, I can show you the process that I've been doing after the meeting, if you'd like. Lee was here one day when I was shoving boxes around, so.
Box after box.
And I'm pretty sure every day, they see me standing by Deb's desk, because I have no more room in my office to sort things.
Can you use the conference room?
I suppose I could, but my office is a lot closer to Deb's desk than the conference room, so.
What's the status of our old auditor?
I have not heard anymore.
Not a word.
No, I had to request some items from him for our audit, and he initially responded very quickly. What he provided me was very incomplete, and so I asked for more information, and I've not heard back from him.
There's been no issues with it or removing him from our service or anything like that?
I literally haven't heard a thing from him, I haven't, nothing.
I think he's got bigger fish to fry than just that right now.
Yeah.
Okay, policy amendments.
Okay, we got two of them, one of them is the, first one would be the school board committees, and the only thing we did was we added the hot lunch committee for our eighth committee, so we've got extra cracker, transportation, building grounds, curriculum, policy, negotiations, finance, and budget, and hot lunch.
So, is this, we didn't get anything new since back in October, so is this the same one that was sent out in October?
Yeah, it would've been, just that it got added hot lunch. I can, I'll, I can send these out once they're approved, I'll send it to them.
So, we are splitting building and grounds and transportation?
Well, we listed them as separate, standing special committees. I mean, that's where we listed them, I don't know if that's.
Does it help with the early transportation together?
Yeah.
Should we leave them together?
Should we leave them together?
I would.
Think so.
But, I mean, they're listed.
Oh, they're listed.
We list them separately on here, because we said they were two different things, so we, we listed each area.
Right.
We didn't list them together as, as one, so, I mean, it.
If that, if that's not.
However, however you wanna look at it, I mean, because.
The standing committees are together.
These were approved at the July meeting, so they, don't they have to stand, or be?
Or be changed, that's my question, are they going to be continually together, or are you splitting them?
That should be amended, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I thought we were keeping them together, so I'm confused.
And that is not true?
No, on, on here, it's, she split it, when we split it, when we, when we did it, we, we talked about, being that they were separate, we were gonna make them separate committees, but they could still have the same members and still meet at the same time, that was our discussion, so. But, I mean, we could easily say buil, building grounds, transportation together.
Yeah, it was, 'cause, 'cause I remember what I was talking about, in the future, there might be.
An issue where we.
An issue with.
One of them and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's the same people.
Yeah. 'Cause although you, they're two different committees, they can meet at the same time on the same, but at the same board members.
A lot of times, we discuss both things, I mean.
Right, and that's, that's what we're saying, but we're, we're thinking further down the line in the future, if, for whatever reason, we have to, there's a transportation issue that just has to be transportation or, or whatever, I don't know, I.
And we've just met this.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, that's, I know that's always the way you've done it, and that's, if you.
Do you prefer one way or the other?
If we prefer to leave them together and leave them.
Well, if it's standing, unless, I don't know if I wanna switch them in the middle of the time here. If you wanna look at switching it, I'd rather wait till we have our annual meeting and then set committees again.
Then let's leave it.
Okay, so then the other, then.
The only amendment would be adding the.
The only amendment would be the hot, adding the hot lunch, so then we, we can, what we'll do is I'll send it out and we'll re, we'll approve it and.
This is the first reading anyway.
Well, the amendments don't need, they just need to be approved, so they don't, they don't need readings, amendments.
Then we need to just add hot lunch.
We'll add hot lunch if you, if you wanna.
And these two would be together, just as they are now.
If you wanna leave building grounds and transportation together, I'll just have Mrs. Bussie put that, you know, change it and then put it out, so. It would be reviewed, she had reviewed and, and, uh, adopted seventeen, reviewed in twenty-one, so. Then we just amend it tonight, and she could put that on there, so building grounds and transportation will stay as one, and we're just adding hot lunch.
Yep.
Okay?
So, these seven committees, that will be done.
Seven committees, yes, yep.
Put for a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Other discussion?
I'll second it, but he had his hand up too, so.
You go ahead.
I heard Rob. Roll call.
Rob?
Yes.
Chad?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Brett?
Yes.
And then the other one was the compensation, um, the original one has board members receiving fifty dollars, so this was changed to seventy-five, so there's two spots in there where it goes from fifty to seventy-five.
And then we can do that revision.
On the revision.
Cindy, second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Rob?
Yes.
Chad?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Anything else, there are correspondence, there's two thank you cards running around, right, everybody seen them?
Two thank you cards?
Yep.
The other one?